Hi, everyone. It is 7:03 now, so we're going to get underway. I don't know if more people are coming, or people online, or everyone knows everything already. That'd be great. So I'm Lisa O'Donnell. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Other Planning Board members may be joining us at some point this evening or not. This isn't one of our regularly scheduled meetings. So it's really just this public forum, which is intended to review what we're proposing for residential districts, give you some background, and then to take questions and answers at the end. So I'm going to walk through -- I'm going to read here because I want to make sure I cover everything, so I apologize for reading everything that I've written, but it's the best way to make sure that I hit all the points I wanted to make.
Does that microphone work?
I think so, yeah. Okay. Oh, can you hear me better now?
There we go.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, so, all right. And please interrupt if I've -- if you can't hear me at some point. So I'm going to walk through the proposal for the residential districts. And we'll take questions from attendees here tonight, and then any questions from people participating remotely. After all questions have been answered, then we'll take comments and suggestions from residents here in the room, and then from any attendees online. The format tonight is just to provide information, answer questions, and to gather feedback. Please note that this process is still underway, and that the map and the new bylaw language are not yet finalized, which is why we're still looking for input. The Planning Board will be finalizing our proposal a week from tonight, on October 2, to get it to Town Council for review. Three weeks from tonight, on October 16, will resolve any changes they recommend. And then on the following Monday, October 21, the Selectmen will be signing the warrant with our completed articles, including any maps of the districts. So some background on the project. We started the project in May 2021, when Annual Town Meeting passed a temporary moratorium on changing the use of property from residential use or open space to business or industrial use. There's a sign-in sheet and some handouts back there. The Selectmen put this article on the warrant because of increasing complaints about commercial activity in areas that were primarily residential neighborhoods, and which felt ill-suited to these areas. This article was intended to essentially ask residents if land use regulations in town needed to be updated and/or strengthened. Town Meeting approved that temporary moratorium by well more than two-thirds vote needed for a bylaw change. And since then, Town Meeting has overwhelmingly supported two extensions of this moratorium. So the members of Town Meeting have basically said that, yes, zoning and land use regulations need to be studied and updated to protect neighborhoods and residential properties. By approving this moratorium, residents are essentially asking or instructing the Planning Board, in its role of reviewing and updating the zoning bylaw, to study the concerns about land use in town. I want to be clear on this point, that the work of the Planning Board has undertaken over the past few years, and continues to do with this latest proposal, is in response to residents' concern, and not in the direction of any other board or department in town. We work to support the residents and property owners in town, and three affirmative votes on the moratorium have been essentially our marching orders. Since the original moratorium vote, the Planning Board has received grants and assistance for a two-phase project with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is MAPC, to review and assist us in upgrading the bylaw. The applications for these grants included support from various town boards and committees, as well as from the Greater KPN Chamber of Commerce, speaking on behalf of the business community. The first MAPC grant concluded with recommendations on reorganization of our zoning bylaw, which were voted into place at the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and contained no substantive changes, was just reformatting of the document. The second grant started shortly after that, and the MAPC supported the Planning Board with the help in many bylaw updates made at Fall 2023 Town Meeting and at this past May's Annual Town Meeting. These updates included site plan review improvements, including a hearing and a butter notification for a change of use, clearer definitions and well-articulated purpose of the overall bylaw, codification of the general use district, which I'll touch on more in a little bit, and addition of several new special permit categories, in addition to evaluation criteria to help both applicants and the Planning Board themselves. Since the second grant wrapped up earlier this year, the Planning Board has continued to work towards creating residential zoning districts with the assistance of our new part-time town planner Valerie Messard, who has been a big asset with her deep experience in zoning in comparable communities on the South Shore. Creating appropriate residential districts is the next logical step in working towards protecting neighborhoods and residents throughout town. We have prepared a preliminary proposal that I'm going to walk through shortly, and is shown on the maps that are set up here and in the room, and also on the screen behind me. To start this process, the Planning Board has reviewed the MAP survey from the first phase of the project, as well as earlier surveys by other committees and towns. There is consensus around the assets of the River and the Marsh and our scenic areas and small-town rural feel. This helped inform the selection of where rural residential districts will be located. We also took a look at what neighboring communities do, since examples of other solutions are always instructive. We found that all our neighbors have relatively small commercial and industrial districts compared to the area of land that is set aside for strictly residential use. I know that people like to say that we don't need to be like other towns, but it's still useful for planning purposes to understand typical land use patterns in our area, since most other towns in the state are largely comprised of residential districts. There are five towns that don't have residential districts, and the other four are the Berkshires, and then there's us. So even with our proposals for the districts, we still aren't like other towns, and we have never been and never will be. So then, our next step was to overlay the types of property uses that assessors use to categorize properties in town on the town map, which is what's on the screen now. And there's also a hard copy of it over there. And all of this information is online on our webpage. So this includes several types of residential use, quite a few different categories of commercial or business use and industrial use, along with mixed use, which includes both commercial and business or industrial on the same property, along with categories for open space, including forest, agricultural, and recreation. Other categories on the map include municipal uses, developable land, and undevelopable land. And Essex also has a mystery category of, we don't know who owns this land. And there's actually, if you look at this map, the areas in gray down here are some of the property that we don't know the owner of. So it's interesting. Understanding the established use patterns in town told us where businesses tend to grow, and which areas are more residential in nature, again, helping to inform where districts would be appropriate. Although not shown on the maps yet, we also considered the areas of town that are in the sewer service system, and are therefore more suitable for future development. And although current sewer flow is limited, this may not be the case in the future. We also prepared another survey, asking residents about types of businesses that they would or would not welcome in their neighborhoods. And these results are available on the Planning Board page. And I've got to switch screens now. Bear with me, please. I just want to bring this up. It is in your handouts. And this here shows a summary of the types of uses that we asked about in the survey. And the left-hand column with is V for village and R for residential. In the copies you have here, it's in gray, but online you can see it's in color, trying to highlight the uses that are more widely supported versus those that aren't as much. But the bottom line here, the takeaway here, is that when we summarize what people agreed within the village district versus the rural district, you can see there's a lot more support for sort of small business options in the village districts than there was in the rural residential areas. So that survey has been really helpful in helping us look at where these district boundaries should be drawn. So I'm going to go back to the map. And that, like I said, that's on the handout that you have there, and that's also available on the webpage, on the Planning Board's page. So this helps steer us towards creating two types of districts, which you can see from the map, are the village residential districts, which are what is in the pale purple here, and the rural residential district, which is shown in the pale green on the map that's up on the screen. Although each of these districts have discrete areas, the same standards will apply in each area, so there's no differentiation beyond that. So even though they're not necessarily all connected, they all will still have the same standards of being either village or rural. It's also important to consider that the areas that are not highlighted on this map is either of the new proposed districts. And these are the areas that will remain in the general use district, which is whatever is white on the map. As Essex has incrementally introduced some districts, we first started with small districts, residential districts at Canoma Point, and these are up here. They're two small residential districts that we drew in order to be able to sell property up there. Then in 2021, the downtown district was approved, which is at the center of town, and that's the red-hatched area on the map here, right mainly along Main Street. So that's the red hatch here, and that's the already established district. Then at last Fall's Town Meeting, the general use district was approved, which didn't change anything about allowable uses, but just formalized the rest of the land area in town as a use district. So the uses that were allowed in the general use district aren't any different than what's always been allowed in town, which is residential, business, and industrial, along with, obviously, open space and municipal properties. So any land areas in Essex that are not in one of the three smaller districts, the two at Canoma Point and the downtown district, are currently included in the general use district. So that's right now, that's everything that you see as white or rural residential or village residential right now as part of general use. So the proposal that we're putting forward would essentially carve the village and rural residential districts out of the general use district. The continued role of the general use district is important, since all uses, residential, business, and industrial, can still develop by right in these areas. And since areas of town are still open for these uses, we are not faced with needing to create actual commercial or industrial districts. The areas in general use remain as they are today with all uses as options, but they also include residential uses currently. So trying to actually delineate and draw suitable commercial or industrial districts would be very complicated, and would likely end up including residences, which would be problematic. So having the general use district codified to include all those uses basically alleviates the need to draw residential, I'm sorry, commercial or industrial districts at a different time. And so we're not working towards that as a goal, we're not planning on doing that. This is really the extent of districting that we're looking at in the foreseeable future. So the village district areas are closer to the center of town, and are on either end of the downtown district. So you see, this is the downtown district here, and the village districts are on either end of that. And then out along Western Avenue is another area of a village residential district. The end of Eastern Avenue remains in the general use district at this time. Then the more rural areas towards the outskirts of town are included in the rural residential district. And so that is the area along Apple, down by the lake, down part of southern, not all the way down southern, there's still land down here, because some of this is unknown and could be developable for business use down by the highway, because 128 is right down here. So that allows some expansion down there. And then up out towards Canoma Point is rural residential, and then out John Wise Avenue, including Belcher and Cho. The important part of the bylaw section for each district is the allowable uses. The chart, there's a chart that's been handed out that summarizes these, and we're going to walk through those, just to understand what would and would not be permitted in both the village and the rural residential districts, so we can understand the differences between them. First, as part of the changes being proposed for Fall Town Meeting is adding a new definition for something we're going to call village business. This definition will describe the characteristics and features of a neighborhood-scale business that would fit into a residential area with minimal disruption. The criteria that will be used to evaluate a proposal's suitability for siting in a residential neighborhood will include concerns like adequate off-street parking, limited increases in traffic, other safety and infrastructure concerns, like emergency access, access to necessary utilities, including sewer, hours of operation, size and scale of buildings, and other site features, including signage and displays, and the effects on the surrounding areas, including light, noise, odors, and other interferences that could extend beyond property lines. Another point to clarify is how property uses are permitted in Essex, and this has typically been through the building permit process, including site plan review by the Planning Board. Some uses require a special permit, which includes a public hearing and a butter notification. If the use in the buildings are approved in a special permit process, the Planning Board writes a decision, which the applicant then needs to record with their property deed and with the registry. So this is a more rigorous process, with opportunities for the Planning Board to impose limitations, and also the ability to reject an application if it doesn't meet established criteria. So now to talk about the uses that are allowed in the different districts, there's, like I said, the handout, I'll just have to find it here. There we go. So this is the handout that you have also, and I'm putting it up on the screen for people who aren't here. So first to talk about, oop, I'm on the wrong page, to talk about existing property use and what the options for that property are in the future under these rural residential, under the village and rural residential district options. So for property that is currently residential use in both districts, it obviously can continue as residential, including home occupation, which is important to note, that we're not planning at this time any changes to the home occupation section of the bylaw. Single family is still, single family and two-family are still by right. And it's also interesting to notice that the state has passed new housing laws, and as of next February, ADUs will be allowed throughout the state on any single-family Multifamily, including three or more, has always been throughout town by special permit. And so in the general use district right now, which is where everything is at this time, any multifamily, which is three-family or more than that, is by special permit. So there's no intent to change that for either of these new residential districts. So multifamily, three or more, is still going to be by special permit. Agriculture, larger than five acres, is by right in the state bylaw. We're proposing to make agriculture by right for three to five acres, so reducing the allowable lot size to have an agricultural use. And the difference here is that in the village residential district, we're proposing that the village businesses, which is the definition that I just outlined about a neighborhood-scale business, would be allowed, a residential property could convert to a village business through the special permit process. And it would need to fulfill, meet all the requirements of a village business to do this, and there would be a public hearing, a butter notification, that sort of thing. This proposal is based on the fact that we did see a lot of responses about acceptable business uses in my neighborhood kind of thing, from the village, from the respondents who sort of fell into the village area district. So that's, this is, the thinking here is that this allows area for businesses to grow, to move. There's been discussion about what happens when the causeway is no longer as useful, or it floods more often. Where would businesses be allowed to retreat? So the idea is that suitably scaled businesses could relocate or open up in areas in the village business, in the village residential districts, as long as they were suitably sized and managed. Open vacant land will have essentially the same options as a residential property would, so that single-family, two-family by right, ADUs in the future, three or more multifamily properties by special permit. The same thing with agricultural use for three to five acres, in addition to the more than five acres by state allowance. And then again, open land would allow a village business by special permit, and that's obviously not an option in the rural district. And then getting to existing businesses. So the important thing to note about existing businesses that do get drawn into a new residential district is that that use is vested in perpetuity per mass general law. There is a two-year allowance for, in the state law, for a business to restart if it has shut down, and we're proposing to extend that to three years, simply because restarting a business is often complicated, and making a business transaction is also complicated. So we're proposing to extend the two-year allowance to three years, just to provide a little bit more flexibility to business property owners that are now on a residential district. Sorry, I'll think of it again. The, and so that's, in both districts, they have that right. Oh, the other, what I did want to mention is, this vested right to operate that business in perpetuity travels with the property, not with the owner. So that you can sell the property, and that use can continue. So it does not sunset if you were to sell the property. A business use in the village district could change to a village business through the site plan review. So rather than have a special permit, because it's already established as a business property, it would be a site plan review to change to a different type of business that would qualify as a village business. Any business use could change to a single, any single or two-family by right, and could change to a multifamily through special permit. And then also, an existing business property could obviously go to agricultural with the state right, and then allowing three to five acres also. When we look at existing business properties in the rural residential district, obviously, an existing business is vested in perpetuity by state law. And then there's the ability to change to residential or agricultural, but we're not providing any options to change to a different type of business. There's state law that sort of, state law and legal precedent about changing, if an existing business wants to change their use, it has to fall within a very similar narrow frame of something that's similar. So an existing business property that is sort of, say, there was a landscape company that was running in the rural residential area, and they wanted to change their business property to be a different use that was more like a retail or something like that, that would be different enough that it would not be allowed. And then talking about pre-existing non-conforming uses, some, which is what all these, what we're talking about when businesses get captured in a residential district, they are pre-existing, so they have the right to continue in perpetuity. But they have become non-conforming, because when the new bylaw goes into place and creates a residential district that does not allow business, it's a non-conforming use. And so any business in the rural residential district would become non-conforming. However, in the village residential district, a business that met the requirements of the new village district description that we're proposing would not be non-conforming, it would be conforming. And only businesses that are in the village area that do not meet the village business requirements, that are larger or more active, or however you want to describe it, then they would be non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming uses. So I know this is all a lot, but the important thing here, this chart is trying to sort of summarize what the options are for the different properties. All this will be listed out in use tables when we write the actual bylaw sections, which we're still working on and getting input from council and from our town planner on finalizing that language. And I think, yeah. And then, so really, for each district, there will be a new section of the bylaw that includes a use table that lists these uses out in a different format, which is in keeping with the format that we have for other districts that are already established in town, along with the other language that just sort of goes around creating the district, and then the map gets attached. So even though we're looking here at the overall town map, when you see it in the bylaw, there will be just a smaller maps that just show the individual portions of town that are included in those. So eventually, we will have a full town map that shows all of the districts, but right now, because we've been doing our districts sort of in incremental pieces, we've had to include a map in the bylaw section for each district. So we'll continue doing that until we sort of get all the dust settles, and see how this all sorts out. And eventually, we will have, at some point, a townwide map, not unlike other towns have. You can see, this is Manchester's map, which shows you, this is all rural, I mean, this is all residential area. They have north of 128 limited commercial. And then this is their downtown district here, the sort of pale gray color here. That's Gloucester, sorry. Ipswich is similar too. Ipswich, you can see that this is very, most of Ipswich, this tan color, is all residential. They have some business area, business corridor along Route 1 as it passes through that end of Ipswich. And then even the downtown area, this blow-up map, it's only the red and the dark purple that are not residential, even the sort of dark mustard color, whatever you want to call it, even that is still residential. So you can see that other towns around us have primarily residential, with fairly limited, even though those are the parts of Ipswich that we know best, because that's where we go, there's a lot of Ipswich that is rural, so. I'm sure I missed a thousand things, because there's a lot going on here, but what I'd like to do is open it up to questions, and see if people have questions about what we're proposing, because I would really welcome that, and the more I can do to help clarify and shed light on what we're proposing, it would be helpful. Again, just to repeat, that this is still a draft map. You can see all my little watermarks, preliminary concept. We're still working on it. Oh, I did want to go through the schedule. No, I did that. So right now, we're looking for feedback input and suggestions, and the Planning Board meeting a week from tonight will be sort of trying to wrap that effort up, so that Town Council can review the proposal and start to prepare it for the warrant. So what we've been doing in the past is taking suggestions from residents, whether it's changing the boundaries of a district, or thinking about the uses, something like that. And we bring those to the Planning Board as a whole, we talk about them, and we decide on whether to make a change to the map, or to the wording, or to the allowable uses, and update accordingly. So, you know, until, honestly, until October 16, we're not going to be final. We're hoping to be final on the 2nd, so that what Town Council's reviewing is 99% of what we're proposing. Anyway, so if folks have questions, we're recording this for 1623 Studios, so that we have a version of it that people can watch if they weren't lucky enough to get here this evening. So if you do have questions, if you could come to the microphone, and give your name and address, and then we'll see what we can do with your questions.
Just to suggest, Lisa, can you blow up that view, so we can see the districts more clearly?
Sure. So what do you want to look at?
Well, that's what I want.
Hmm? What's that?
Just in general.
Yeah, no, I mean, because when I blow it up, I lose part of it, so I can move it around, too. And this is, this is all online, too, to be able to take a look at it. We have We have, we do have hard copies of the map here as well.
Hi, Lynn Havikhurst from 10 Winthrop Street. I just thank you for your work on this, and my question is, for the November meeting, are we strictly voting on these districts or will those village business uses be part of what we vote on in November?
Yeah, that's a good question, and thank you for asking because we're actually going to have, we'll have three articles at town meeting. Our first article is going to be some new definitions, which I'm not even talking about tonight because that's really just putting language around some of the special permit uses that were approved at last town meeting in addition to clearing some other things up. So that'll be our first article with definitions. The second article will be to establish what the village business use looks like, and that will be a new section in Section 6-4, which is use regulations in our bylaw. So there'll be a new section there which outlines exactly what a village business is, or the criteria that would, a village business would be evaluated on. And those are going to be fairly qualitative because in the village districts that we're proposing, there are obviously main roads like Martin Street and Western Ave and part of Eastern Ave, and then there are more back roads like Pickering or Prospect and County Road that are not as well-developed as a road. So a business that might be suitable on Martin Street might not be suitable on Story Street. A lot is going to depend on the size of the lot as well and what the business is proposed because it would need to have parking and stuff. So honestly, there are going to be quite a few lots that are now residential within the village district that aren't going to be large enough to really hold a business, unless it's a really, really small business. So that, those, the village business definition is fairly, like I said, qualitative, not quantitative, and that's going to be through the special permit process, which will allow the planning board to, like I said, have a public hearing, there'll be a better notification, and then there's conditions that can be put on it. And if a decision is, if a decision is arrived at to grant that use, then the written decision is recorded with a deed. So there's a very enforceable process there. So that, I'm sorry, so I got off track there. So that will be our second article that will have that new village business use defined. And it's also going to include a section that's going to define municipal use because some of these districts do include municipal properties, and we want to be clear that those municipal properties can obviously continue and have flexibility as well. And then our third article is going to be the two new bylaw sections that establish the village residential district and the rural residential district with all the language that's necessary there, including the map of where those districts actually lay. The other thing that's important to mention right now is when we look at the general use district, in addition to a table of uses, we have other standards in there that are dimensional standards, parking standards, regulations around accessory structures and things like that. We're not changing any of that right now. This exercise is really just about property use. That's not to say that that could not change in the future, but we're not undertaking any of that now. For example, if you look at the properties in the village residential districts compared to typical properties in the rural residential districts, the village properties tend to be smaller. So it's conceivable that in the future, we could adjust the dimensional standards for the village districts to allow smaller setbacks, something like that. Again, that would be a whole process, which is why we haven't undertaken it now. Right now, we're trying to stay ahead of the moratorium and establish these protections around residential neighborhoods in advance. The moratorium expires January 1st, 2025. So we're right now just concentrating on the use categories in, in the village and rural residential districts. Any other questions, comments?
Bill Leahy from 64 Eastern Avenue. I really applaud the planning board's work on this and strongly support the direction you're going. And I have two questions. One, I gather this doesn't alter the bylaw provision that allows up to two additional dwelling units if the lot size is large enough and you wait five years between the delays?
Correct. This, this would not change that. Yeah, our standard is 40,000 square feet for one house. If the street was in existence before 1976, you get 30,000 square feet. If you have more than 70,000 square feet, you're permitted to have two principal structures, and we don't even differentiate right now between residential and commercial structures in the general use district. We would obviously if it was a residential district. And then you're permitted up to three principal structures, so three houses on a lot that's greater than 110,000 square feet. And that's standard in our bylaw, and we're not planning on adjusting that at this time in these districts. Not to say, I mean, anything is open game, but the good thing about bylaw changes is that they, well, it's good, bad, depends on how you look at it, but they're all two-thirds votes at town meetings, so it does have to have broad support before these changes are made. It's not just a majority vote.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
You had mentioned, you know, long-term, or maybe not so long-term concern about the causeway and the flooding of the causeway and perhaps the need to push some of the businesses or new businesses into the village residential area. And am I right that then that would be, what you're proposing is that that would be subject to site plan review to allow business, business uses that otherwise were specified in the business district to move into the village?
Well, it depends. If, it's more about the property that's in the village district because if, if there's a property in the village district, like if you look at the use map, you can see that there are, in the areas where we have the village districts drawn, which isn't overlaid here because there's only so much information you can cram on one map. But we all know, for example, the, the music asylum is here off Martin Street, and so that's an established business property. For them to change their business use would be site plan review. If a residential property in the village district wants to become a business property, that's special permit.
That's special permit.
Because that's, it's, it's not sort of business-to-business change, it's residential-to-business change.
All right. That's helpful. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure, and anyone, you ask all the questions you want. That's what the forum is for.
Jay Havikhurst, 10 Winthrop Street. I just wanted to find out, like, are you planning to use the downtown district zoning setbacks and things in the village district?
Not at this time. We're not at this time proposing any dimensional changes in the village districts compared to the general use district. So right now, everything that is in general use and is also outlined in village or rural residential has one set of dimensional standards that's really town-wide. At this time, we're not proposing to change any dimensional standards, and that's simply because this is confusing enough, and this is a lot for town meeting to absorb at one meeting. So right now, we're just talking about uses and establishing use districts. It's very likely that as we continue to refine the bylaw, we may come back to the village districts and talk about the dimensional standards there because there's so many smaller lots there as well. For context, when the downtown district was established, one of the driving forces in that was to be able to reduce the dimensional standards and allow more buildings that were, before the district was established, non-conforming, allow them to become conforming, which just made alterations for homeowners or business owners easier. And I'm not speaking for the planning board, but looking at the size of most of the lots in the village districts, something, you know, some relief on those would be appropriate at some point, but it's just not now. We're not done. We know this is just another step in our process, so it's something we're definitely open to entertaining down the road.
So like driveway setbacks and things like that that were set up in the downtown district are different now?
Yes, the downtown district, the downtown district was established for two main reasons, and one was to allow multi-mixed use in a, in a building by right, which means you can have both a commercial and a residential use in the same building, which is not allowed elsewhere in Essex. But then it was also done to change the dimensional standards for setbacks. We didn't change building height or anything like that, but it's mainly just setbacks and distance from lot lines because the properties are so much smaller. So that's the kind of conversation we might have about the village property someday, but like I said, it's not part of the request, the proposal that's in front of us now.
So in terms of the overall village, like Winthrop Street, for instance, that's where we live, you know, we saw that you're taking, you're counting cars going up the street the other day, and I don't know how many cars went up the street.
That's, that's not us, that's the police, I think. Yeah, I'm not even sure what that's about. I've seen those too, and I don't know.
I wasn't sure what it was for.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
But like, in terms of use of the street, in terms of parking and combining neighborhood, children running around, they go in the street and that kind of thing, how is that going to be included in the planning of this? Because Winthrop Street, if you have like a garbage truck, you can't get around it either way.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, the street's basically blocked.
Right.
You know, like if you had, if you had cars parked on both sides, you'd have to widen the street.
We, the, the jurisdiction of what the planning board can regulate through bylaw changes really doesn't apply to the streets at all, so we don't really have any jurisdiction over that, it's DPW. But what's important to note is that in the, in the village areas, where we're proposing opportunities for village businesses through the special permit process, we will be looking at off-street parking and increase in traffic, trying to minimize that, trying to keep the neighborhood feel of the areas if there were a business to open.
That was my third question. Who will actually decide who, what is the neighborhood feel?
The planning board would decide that. And that's, and that's why I'm saying that the criteria for village business are going to be qualitative because the neighborhood feel on Martin Street, which is Route 22 and has a double yellow line down the middle of it, are very different than the neighborhood feel of a street, a side street off of, of Martin, so.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, that's why.
I agree with that, I think that that's important. But if somebody takes a building and destroys it, demolishes it, builds a new building, and it doesn't have the characteristics of the other buildings, you can't really stop that, can you?
You, we can't be architectural police really, but we can talk about the scale and the size and the sighting of a building. So those are the kind of things that we're, want to be able to influence the, the scale and how the building is sighted so that it does mesh well with the neighborhood. So that's why we're talking about having it in the context of the neighborhood and making sure that you have that same feel and that a new business that might open in a neighborhood like that isn't going to interrupt the sort of fabric of that neighborhood, whether it's through visual interruption or traffic, noise, lights, anything like that. We want to make sure that things stay in the scale of the neighborhood if something new is established.
You're not talking about general destruction of the neighborhood to have some kind of outdoor. That's what was presented to us before, the outdoor space with benches and things, and then you'd have buildings or hotels possible in our neighborhood.
Yeah, no.
So I don't know how you went from that to this. Like, it seems like a big change, so it sounds good if that's true.
When we were working with MAPC, they're used to working in larger communities that are more built up. So they brought some suggestions and standards that don't really fit tiny little Essex. And so when the planning board was working with the suggestions that they'd made and looking at what residents wanted and what, you know, what residents would accept in their neighborhood, and also sort of the overall sentiment in town about preserving our rural, small-town character, that sort of thing, that's how we sort of landed on, on village areas and rural areas. And so we're not looking, we're not looking at doing changes, we're not doing any sort of street planning or anything like that. We're really just, this effort is to protect neighborhoods to the extent that we can because right now, there are no protections for neighborhoods. And people move into town and think that they're living in a residential neighborhood, and they are in fact not.
Oh, okay. So you will include the word neighborhood in the actual zoning?
Yes, when we talk about.
Not residential.
When we talk about the qualitative features of a village business, it will be to fit it into the context of its neighborhood. So we're going to talk about that, yeah.
I probably have a couple of more questions, but.
We're around.
Bob Tyack, 65 Pond Street. Just want to make sure that I understand existing business uses that will end up in either residential district are vested in perpetuity.
Yes.
And there's a three-year window to restart a business that used to exist at that property. Okay?
And that's, that, we're proposing the three years. State standard, state requirement is that you have a two-year window. We're saying, let's make that three-year, and town council has, has agreed that that's reasonable. She says much longer than that is, is kind of just letting things linger too long, but the three years is reasonable to undertake the transaction of selling a business is, you know, just more complicated.
Okay. Back to your example of landscape business in the rural residential district, if they wanted to convert to retail, that's too different and wouldn't be approved. It may be premature to ask this question, but is there a process for somebody determining what a similar business change would be? I'll, I'll use an example of somebody who's got a machine shop right now, but wants to sell the property to somebody who wants to put a sheet metal fabrication business in the same one, somewhat similar. Is there going to be a process to decide what's acceptable?
There, there is a process, and there's actually a lot of case law surrounding that. And I'm going to talk like I know what I'm talking about, but I just learned this from council yesterday. We had this very same conversation. And there's something called the Powers Test, which was a case that was brought in Barnstable, I believe, years ago. And in that case, they outlined three different criteria that are used to judge whether a different business use is similar enough to be allowed or not. So there is considerable case law around it. And when we started to talk to town council, she was like, oh, the Powers Test. I'm like, okay, I'm going to be looking that up, and I did. So there is, there's a lot of literature about that. If you Google the Powers Test and mass zoning regulations, there's a lot of information about it.
Okay.
So there, there is something out there. And to be honest with you, we're not going to try and include that in our bylaw because it's out there somewhere else.
That's what I thought. Would you envision the planning board would be the process, though, if somebody wants to make that type of a change, that's where it would be initiated?
Yes, and, and, and talking to town council yesterday, they also said that we will be here to help you through that process.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So we would have, we would have their guidance on anything like that.
Mike Dyer, Indian Rock Lane. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Mike.
Good to see you still in the chair. Some of these questions may be because I arrived late and missed some of it, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand business uses in these two districts.
Mm-hmm.
So it appears that in the village residential district, new businesses would be allowed. A conversion of a home to a business would be. A conversion of a, a home to a business would be allowed under special permit?
Right, exactly. The conversion of a residence to a village business, and that, go back to that whole conversation about the definition of village business being of a neighborhood scale, would be allowed through the special permit process as long as they do meet those criteria. So the special permit process does allow the planning board to both condition an application or through writing a decision there, it can provide conditions, and they can also deny it. If someone comes with a proposal that does not in any way, shape, or form meet the village business requirements, it can be denied.
Okay. We'll get, get back to that in a second. So in the rural residential district, conversions to business use, to new business uses, is that that is not allowed?
In the, in the rural residential district, the only businesses would be the ones that are pre-existing, now non-conforming business uses. So there's not an option to create new businesses from residential or open properties in the rural residential neighborhoods.
So I think I also missed the discussion about village, what, what describes, what is a village business?
The village business, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I wrote that part down, so let me go read it again. Because it bears repeating. I mean, this is a lot of information and not everyone's expected to absorb it all at once. Part of the changes being proposed is adding a new definition for village business. This definition will describe the characteristics and features of a neighborhood-scale business that would fit into a residential area with minimal disruption. The criteria that will be used to evaluate a proposal's suitability for sighting in a residential neighborhood will include concerns like adequate off-street parking, limited increases in traffic, and other safety and infrastructure concerns like emergency access, including access to necessary utilities, including sewer, addressing hours of operation, size and scale of buildings, and other site features including signage and displays, and effects on the surrounding area, including light, noise, odors, and other interferences that could extend beyond property lines.
Okay.
And that's going to be a bylaw section that defines those criteria. So it's, someone described it to me as home occupation on steroids.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like there's some squishy, squishiness in there.
And there's squishiness, like I said to Jay, there's squishiness in there because what is an appropriate village business on Martin Street would be different than an appropriate village business on, say, Prospect Street or a much smaller side street.
Right.
And that, that's intentional squishiness.
No, I, I understand what you're getting at. It just seems like, I don't know, it seems like invitation to lawsuits from different sides. Just the squishiness of it, who, you know, who's, the planning board is going to be the arbiter of a lot of kind of subjective questions, is what it seems like.
I, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we've, we've talked about that. And the complication there is that if you, if you scale village business down to the smallest lots in the village district, that's not going to be reasonable for potential larger parcels. So it needs to be scaled according to the parcel and scaled according to the street. So, you know, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of thing.
I like what you're trying to do. I just think it's, it's not going to be easy in execution.
It's, it's not going to be easy, but it's also, I don't think it's going to be that frequent, that people are going to sell their home and want to start a business there.
Okay. Just one more.
Because, because quite honestly, right now, that's allowed and none of that happens. You know, I mean, when's the last time you saw a home turn into a business? Well, officially.
Official, I know. You said it, not me. There are some white areas on the map here, and there, I know there are a couple of sort of outlining commercial areas. Are these, are these not?
Do you want to point to streets or something?
I'm sorry?
Can you name streets that you're talking about?
Well, down, down Eastern Avenue, there appear to be a couple, like in the, on the right-hand side of that map, and I'm not sure what happens all the way down towards Scott's Way and, and those areas.
So down here, you're saying, along here?
Yeah. Like Scott's Way is, is, is that in, is that in a district or what is that?
Scott's Way here is, this is Scott's Way, and that's in general use. If you look at the use map now and you look at Scott's Way, purple is industrial and red is commercial, and light red is commercial mixed with residential. So that area is already developed.
But so, but for purposes of zoning, it's just called general use or is it just, is it not in a zone at all?
I know, it's general use. So anything on this map that is white, hold on.
Yeah, okay. There, there are a few, yeah, there are a few spots.
Yeah. And, and that was, the, the effort was to try and capture neighborhoods and then also leaving some areas available, why isn't, leaving areas for businesses to expand. So those are the areas that remain in white are the general use districts. But these are also, we're looking for input too, if people have suggestions about how property, how district boundaries should be altered. I know we have a couple outstanding requests that the planning board didn't get to at their last meeting, and we're going to come back and circle through all of those at our next meeting. So, you know, we've had someone suggest that Eastern Avenue should be a village district and not remain in the general use era, in the general use district. So, so our point being is we're open to suggestions or comments or questions, and that's why we put the map out there, is that people can look at it and try to understand where, what, and how. But anything in white, like if you look at the, at the, at the code here, our little, so general use district is not shaded, because right now, everything is in the general use district since we codified it a year ago.
Right.
And then village and rural residential districts would be essentially carved out of that, and anything that's not put into one of the residential districts would remain in general use.
Thank you. I'm in support. And good, good work.
Thank you.
Good hard work.
Thanks. We shall see. As with any town meeting, it's who shows up on a given night.
Jake Foster, 15 School. Thank you for this work. It makes a lot of sense, I think, in terms of how you distinguish these. I just want to double-check my understanding, the, the only real distinction between these two from a use perspective is that notion of the village business, is that correct?
The village business is the real difference.
From a use perspective.
Right, exactly, from a use perspective. And that's the only thing we're honestly changing right now is use. We haven't ventured into anything dimensional or anything else, so.
And then my second question is related to, since we were just on the general use, what's left of general use once this gets approved. I mean, a lot of the white is either marsh or wetland or conservation land, and obviously then there's some that, you know, can be developed or is already developed. Can you talk a little bit about why you're kind of keeping that all general use rather than creating like a conservation district or something like that?
So the, we have a lot of wetlands, as everyone knows, and if you look, if you look at, say, we'll start down here in the Manchester Essex Woods, anything that's hatched on this map is already owned by a, a land conservation. So it's MECT, Green Belt, and trustees are the ones who own property. So that, those, those are the properties that, that they own already. Honestly, the effort right now is, is focused on residential neighborhoods because that's what the moratorium was speaking to and what we're trying to address is to, to start to protect neighborhoods. That's not to say that we couldn't in the future augment things, change things. I mean, that, you know, again, anything can happen as long as two-thirds of the town meeting supports it. We did try to leave some areas in general use just to allow properties where businesses could migrate to if necessary. This, and for this exercise, it's also instructive to look at the use map at the same time. And that's why we did the use map. If you were to look at, so say there's some properties along John Wise Avenue, and there are three in particular that remained so far, and we're still having this conversation about where to draw those boundaries. But these, if you look the three here, there's one, two, three, they're left in the general use district in this version of the map. And if you look at the use map, all three of these are shaded this pale pink color, which, there's a whole lot of moving parts with this exercise. If you look at that pale pink color, it's a mixed use of residential, commercial, and other uses. So point being is there's already a commercial component that is vested by right on those properties. So the idea was to leave some areas available, and it made sense to pick the ones that already had a commercial component. And then you can see like down at the end of John Wise Ave on the Ipswich Line, this big red property, believe it or not, is the boathouse, which is this tiny little building on the corner here. This is all wetlands back here. So we left that in general use because it's already, already commercial there. Right now, this property is Cogswell's Grant, which is this weird pink color here, which is civic. And the assessors have classified Cogswell Grant as civic because it's a museum technically, it's not a conservation organization. So there's already, there's also a request pending for the planning board to, to consider about putting Cogswell's Grant, which is this big white property here, still in general use, putting that into the adjacent rural district. So those are some of the conversations we're still going to have. So I don't know if that, did I answer your question kind of?
It does. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Questions, comments, anyone? We'll be open for business through next Monday. If anyone has other things that they can email to us at the planning board, get in touch with me, however you want to do it. We want to try and pull together any more feedback from residents so that at our next planning board meeting, we can try and finalize whatever additional tweaks and changes we might make to the map and/or the use, the use criteria that we're proposing for the, for the districts. Yes, no, anyone? I guess that's it for us then.
Online participants.
Oh, do we have, is there anyone online? Teresa can.
If there's anyone online who would like to make a comment or ask a question, can you unmute yourself and speak?
All right. Well, thank you everyone for coming. I'll be here if you want to, the, the maps are up here if anyone wants to take a little, you know, stick around, we'll, we'll be here. I won't take them down until everyone's set with them. So those are sort of the full-scale maps, which are also online. So if you go, let me pull that up just so people can see. I'm going to stop that share and go to sharing my, here, where is it? Is that, no, I don't want that one. Oh, here. If you, if you go to the planning board website, so this is the town webpage, you go to boards and committees, and you come to planning board. We have our own expertly curated site. And under here is residential district effort. And we keep this updated with the latest versions of everything, and there are links to everything we've talked about here this evening. So the use map is there, list of Essex land uses, results of the survey, there's even the assessor information that provides the guidelines for how uses are established. So it's all there in addition to the calendar that I talked about as well. So visit our site and walk yourself through all this. And that's it. Like I said, if you have questions, we'll be here. Thank you everyone for coming. We're going to stop the recording now since we're pretty much wrapped up.